To our work session for Monday, May twentieth. We have Commissioner Farrow with me, Commissioner Bollos, Commissioner Harvey is excused. Agenda item one is a discussion and our action for approval of the minutes for the commission work session held on May thirteen, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item two. We have a discussion and update on Winton Park rezon development agreement. Charlie's not here. We have Rick Grover and Tammy Adalat and
Liam.
Liam and Sean Wilkinson and your names.
Igor and Wayne. So can I turn this over to you?
So in the last meeting you had with these gentlemen on this, there was some concerns, especially one of your concerns, Commissioner Farrow, was the pocket park. This area right here was identified as a pocket park. And your concern when we're looking back through the minutes and that was, you know, not to have these pocket parks throughout, but have more regional parks that are more beneficial to the community. And Commissioner Bollos, your comments were you didn't want to look at any R three. You wanted to look at R one fifteen that was compliant with the general plan. And then Commissioner Hart or Harvey's comments was the two thousand donation versus the seventy five hundred donation was his comments. So the developer, he's went back and looked at this and look at the possibility of getting rid of the the pocket park in this area to do some townhomes, is it patio homes?
Which is what he suggested.
Yeah. And so they have some revisions that they would like to show you and get your input on that and where you guys are with that. And then they would take that donation and give it to the Parks Department for a contribution to more of a regional park type element further down the road as opposed to including in this area. And so that's what they would like to present.
Yep. So this plan here, which is space two, has been modified to allow more road frontage to service this park area as far as the patio homes go. We actually ended up with a few lots less, but it's a much better plan than we believe than than the previous one. So what this allows us to do is service this whole area here. So your detention pond comes to here. We may create an area here for detention for water as well, and then basically develop the rest of it into patio homes. He was quite adamant. He wanted a slab on gray, small home, three bedrooms, one bathroom, no garage, but we do want garage. So this gives you an indication, but it's not the right plan. This was done while we were doing this one here. So the difference here is we've got almost a rectangular part. This one came off the old plan that showed that angle, but essentially we'd like to put in blocks of patio homes here. This has got two entries. We're probably going to increase that because we've got this road coming off here, probably three, four entries to create these blocks of, we've got eight, eight units, maybe another eight, maybe another four. So we're not sure exactly how many we can fit in depending what what the city like to see. So this whole area is going to be built up by a couple of feet as we build up the land next door so that we don't have this water issue.
So we're at the app thinking more changing the part to this kind of patio concept in that area.
Then Charles also wanted an elevation to show what it would look like from the street because we've got this long fence running up to the street. And we've done two elevations, one would see the level. So you're not going to see an awful lot of the house because the fence is about six feet tall. Then there could be some two story, but at this stage, we don't know what the mix will be, but it gives you an idea.
So will the two stories be patio homes as well or?
No, no patio homes going to single level.
Right.
But yeah, but we have some lots on the street and they might be twin lots or houses.
Okay.
Because they're fairly large lots. It's still about a quarter of an acre. But if they were all two story, that's what it'd look like.
I don't know. We've decided where we we're going two story or not, right? We probably more the
Well, the homes could be two story that way.
Yeah, but yeah, the homes could be.
Yeah, depending what the buyers want.
Right.
So in answer to your question, I think you had the other week as far as affordability. So with these patio homes, and if we can utilize this land for those patio homes, we believe the pricing on patio homes will be in the four hundred thousand mark.
Okay.
Okay, we've talked to two or three contractors here in Ogden who built patio homes. And they've all, they've given us an indication where the price will be, but they did talk about fours. So I think that hits your affordability budget. And I think we did talk about fives, but these are smaller homes, so they're going to be less expensive.
With the garage?
Yes, yes. It'd be a double garage. We'd like to see double garage with all the homes.
Yeah. Yeah, I like the garage idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I think the other commissioner, you said carpers, but we can't see.
I don't remember him saying that.
Fire reports don't hide anything.
So they're going to be thirteen, fourteen hundred square feet in that vicinity, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, double garage.
So how many additional units are talking about?
We're not too sure, but we're probably looking at about thirty in that vicinity, but we have to finalize our plan based on what the city proves on that base two plan.
This been the planning commission?
It did go to planning commission and now we're coming back looking at these revisions. We wanted to get your take on this.
From the project, just because of the affordability and so many number of lots, I mean, the the price of the excavation is just didn't matter. So we had to rethink a little bit. And that's why it was good to get the feedback on the pocket park thing. And then, you know, could we utilize this area for more, you know, patio and home type housing rather than, you know, just a park there. And so that that's really the main I see here in terms of being able, for the rezon, I think there's a hundred and sixteen that could be that's associated with the rezon in that space two.
We won't hit that.
We won't hit that. We'll be still below that. But it still offers a few more units to help us, you know, relative to the average number of units that we get on there.
So as White's talking about the costs, I want to show to you two quotes that we've got on with on this subdivision here, which was originally thirty lots, but it's going to be twenty seven. But just to give you an idea of cost, and there's two quotes. And then what I've got for you is a summary sheet. Apart from the excavator, who's the biggest cost, we have all these other fees here, and on the bottom, I've averaged out the cost of the lots. The lowest cost is about a hundred and fifty thousand. That's without anything. There's no profit. And we'd work on twenty five, thirty, thirty three percent, something in that vicinity. So you could see if we had to add that to the hundred and fifty thousand, the loss would be over two hundred thousand.
Right.
We we are still seeking more quotes, but these are fairly current. They were done in the last couple of weeks. So it's pretty hard to gain the affordability part with all the extra things that were talked about, but with the patio homes, it'll make a difference. If we had to do it the way the park was set up and spend this four hundred thousand for the improvements, it'd be a borderline whether we could do it. But we do want to do the project because now that you guys have mentioned you'd like to see patio homes, that's makes it more affordable. So instead of doing twenty seven, we might be able to do another thirty units on top. So and that makes it affordable.
So those quotes were based off of thirty lots. Now that was the original plan. We're not trying to rethink this. That's why we had Charlie said, gosh, you know, we I don't know, we're going to be able to do this. So we started rethinking that. And that's why that's, you know, again, that's why we're coming to you saying, hey, we like those ideas, you know, this is kind of conceptually how we'd like to do that. You know, and we we're still staying below the average number of lots for the rezon, but it makes it a little bit more affordable for us as developers, you know what I mean? So that's kind of like to get your thoughts on that.
Well, I, I, again, not a real fan of the pocket parks. I'd rather see that going to some type of regional park that more people could enjoy. And I, so what are you saying that you that you would then increase your contribution to the park district?
In exchange for the park.
It would in terms of the total number of units because then then you have, you know, more of those that then increases our, I guess, for impact fee or the the parks, right?
Right.
And that was the other thing is we we talked about it in the in the last work session, which was, you know, we had traveled down the path originally with this plan of five thousand dollars per lot. That's when we were working with the Parks Department. And then this is the letter that he got from them, just saying that that's what your contribution would be.
Your text. I just sent you a text.
And so
The last commissioner wanted us to provide evidence of the numbers that we talked about with the city. We've been dealing with this for over six months. And we had that meeting with the parks that were pretty early this year, wasn't it? January, February? I think it was January.
January.
So they they said five thousand dollars per new lot. Then they came back, the city came back and said that they would prefer to do two thousand dollars per lot, but be retrospective to go back to
For phase one, so.
So that's what you've got right here.
Correct.
Three thousand for all eighty.
Correct. Exactly.
Five thousand on phase one.
Correct.
Well.
Correct, yeah. That's what the parks said.
That that was the kind of difference. So what you see there
Oh, or is two thousand for all eighty four.
So it became a discussion. I got, it became a discussion, hey, five thousand for the phase two. But I got two thousand for the entire, like, the other fifty four lots we've already developed, like, last couple of years. And we said, well, what do the numbers look like? That's when we worked with Charlie and the Parks Department. They said, well, how about you? It's only about twenty thousand dollar difference. We said, okay, we'll we'll do the two thousand dollars for the entire phase one and phase two. So that that's kind of what we led down the path.
Who talks about the money?
That's some of the planning, what we presented, it was presented to the planning commission there, just some of the minutes and notes and stuff that were in there. And so we've been traveled down the path of either five or two thousand, and the seventy five hundred dollar thing was like, that was something that we learned like last week or a couple of weeks ago, I guess, when we were met with Lance and then come here, you know? And so we prefer obviously to to deal under the two or five thousand dollar scenario. We've been kind of traveling down the two thousand dollars. And then as we add more units, yes, we would, that would number it obviously go up.
Yeah.
And because there's more units and then we've got more.
We need a little bit of time to finalize this plan, but yes, if we get, let's say, twenty units on there. So that'd be at the same contribution, another twenty units on top of the phase one and this one for twenty seven lots. So there would be more money coming back because we're getting opportunity of building some more units here. But this seven and a half thousand, I mean, is this a contribution or donation?
It's a donation.
It is a donation.
We call it.
So being a donation.
Not a required, it's a donation.
So there is some room for negotiation being a donation, right?
Well, I think that's up to the park district, correct?
Yeah. And the commission's wanting the park district's approval and in order to get that.
We're already two steps ahead of you.
So we don't, we don't want to set the fee for the park district.
Okay, well, we met with the park district two weeks ago before we came into the commission's meeting. And I don't want to tell you the full story because I'm a bit disappointed. Because he's spoken at a place a few times and he's been told that he he can't really talk much about how things are going to be done. He's just got, he can have a wish of what he wants, but it won't be necessarily accepted by the commissioner. And he said, he told us, he was almost in tears about the commission tried to increase the fees to seven and a half thousand. That's when we first learned about it. I said, really? Well, because you guys have got a dedicated park, a little bit down the road, one and a half acres, and you may increase that. So that's where all the money's going to from what he told us.
Which we think is good. I mean, we want to donate to that, right? It's just that learning the higher later, I think, it's almost kind of like, almost kind of in the eleventh hour, feeling like we've been talking about five and two, you know, for the last
Well, we we understand that study that we that came up with a seventy five, we just completed under a month ago.
Right, yeah.
So this is new to a lot of us, but when Charlie did that study, right?
Yep.
I mean, he compared like Syracuse that we want to know what the actual cost to do a park. It's a lot more than what we, surprised me. Surprised me, but anyway, I'm, you know, subject to
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, I'm I'm okay with this.
I'm okay too. I, yeah, I mean, I'll be interested to see what the commission has to say about it, but it looks like you addressed all the all the concerns we had.
Right, right, yeah. But you will get more money because of the, whatever approval we get on that.
I think Commissioner Harvey will appreciate the patio homes, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
So, yeah, so now he's not here, so we can't get an approval on this and
Well, and this, they wouldn't give an approval here, but you kind of get that gut feel.
Yeah, great. Oh, we had that before too. Two thousand?
Yeah.
Seven and a half, what?
Yeah.
But if it's a donation, I don't think it's like an arm twisting exercise. It's got to be Mr. Lawyer, a donation.
That's how the development will state it as a donation.
Okay.
The agreement, the development agreement will have it as a donation.
Can we make sure the other commissioner understands? Because I'd like to be on the same page. I mean, we want to help, but we don't want to be taken advantage of because we've been led to believe for the last six months, this is what's going to happen. The last minute, I mean, he's aiming for the sky, this guy. It's going to burn a lot of developers off that aren't going to do projects. Should have been brought in maybe gradually, maybe five thousand, but to get hit with that and the water impact fees, and you could see my listing of impact fees on there.
Yeah, no, we we understand that very well.
We'll have it listed out in the development agreement for you to review before you guys sign and see your opinion.
You haven't got a final copy of that yet, have you?
I do not.
Is this the one Charles is working on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and he's away. Geez, you picked the perfect day to represent us.
I think, okay, I think that I hesitate to speak for Commissioner Harvey, but I think that he's really going to look at the direction of the planning commission. So as far as that donation goes, I think he's going to take their recommendation into consideration.
Okay.
Is that fair to say?
Very fair.
Yeah. So we can leave all this with you then?
Yeah.
All the plans.
You can look it over if you don't want, so when it comes back.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Anything from the set?
Nope.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Right, thanks for your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet. See you guys.
Hope.
Thanks.
You're back.
I'm back.
Good. Okay, we're back for item three. We still have Tom Wilkinson, Liam Pio, Tammy Adalot, Rick Grover, and then we'll just go around the table and have you introduce yourselves for the record.
Sarah Wickren with the planning commission, system planner. I never know how to say it.
Hi, Tammy Quan, same planning commission.
Jason available planning commission.
Andrew Vero planning commission.
Wayne Adderallity planning commission.
Pat Burns, Link Development.
Brent Edwards, planning commission.
Ashley, Link Development.
Heather, Link Development.
Babe and Link Development.
Awesome. Welcome, everyone. Okay. This item is of the special regarding West Creek general plan enough amendment.
Great. Thanks. So you see the little cursor up on the screen in that little area right there? So this area right in through here, this is Black Pine. And then this area right into here, we had a work session with the planning commission this last meeting. And the proposal was to look at this area being R three. The general plan shows it as R one fifteen. This area right in through here is the potential West Weaver corridor in through here. And Pat and Link Development is wanting to see this area in through here have some type of R three designation. And we wanted to get your take on this because the last works, few work sessions we had with you guys is you had mentioned, let's hold off on any R three in the future until we get caught up to speed and how development happens in other areas. And so we says, well, let's get the commission flavor on this. And so that's where we invited the planning commission to come here as well because they wanted to get, you know, your take on it and where you guys are at with the R three and that. So that's kind of a brief history of why the planning commission's here and they just want to kind of get a feel of where you are with the R three at the present time. If the plan's not identifying areas as R three, this is identifying the areas R one fifteen. And so that's you probably want to have Pat maybe kind of give his side of the story. And I'm not trying to discourage the R three. I'm just, that was the direction we'd received from you a few weeks ago. And so I didn't want to, you know, over promise or anything like that of where you're at. And maybe this area is a little different because, you know, I think at some point it probably does make sense to have some type of R three in this area. It's just timing, you know, with Black Pine happening here and we have the M designation, and then we have the West Weaver corridor coming along that area. You know, is is this the right time? So.
Commissioner Farrow? Or Pat, did you want to, go ahead?
Yeah. So just going right off what Rick was saying, this is just 12th Street right here. This is the M and T zone, Black Pine bringing in twenty five hundred brand new jobs. So I've got this piece tied up, this piece tied up, working on negotiating some stuff over here, but this is kind of like when I'd met with each of you guys individually who's talking about this is it just makes a lot more sense to do more of a mixed, not a, not a commercial mixed use, but a mixed use of an R three zone. And that's where I brought a couple of different examples to you guys last time, some inertial or some townhomes with some mixed use. And we talked about doing an overlay, like a 12th Street overlay. There's no overlay that exists, but I brought in the overlay to Charlie. So they tried, I'm willing to work with this and and pay to have an ordinance redone. But in the meantime, go through with an R three zoning here because that's all I'm looking for is to do an R three in this area here. And that's kind of what I proposed to you guys. And then this is where the 12th Street, I mean, the Davis New York corridor is going to be coming in.
How do you know that?
This is where we're, this is what, this is off of UDOT's thing, but also with West Bridge, this is where we're putting in the two hundred foot corridor so that it could come in there. But even if, you know, this isn't what is got me this, the decision to rezone this is because of the M and T zone that's here. That's seventy five hundred jobs coming in right here. It makes more sense instead of third acres to have you know, more of an obtainable housing in this area here. So that's what I'm trying to do. And we can rezone that with the development agreement with saying this is the concept's what I want to bring. So I'm not when the work session with the planning commission the other day, they brought up a good point, hey, we don't want to just rezone this R three and then you have whatever you want. I would come in with a concept like that, not that, just getting like this type of a concept, which is it's got smaller lots with townhomes here. They'll have a difference of three different size style homes here. I would do six packs, patio homes, and this is just a concept thrown together really quickly. I would actually line more of the 12th Street with the back of the patio home and do so, I mean, the townhomes, do a mixture of patio and then some, you know, more, everything attainable. I had presented, I've met with nine different builders to build in northern Utah right now. And every single one of them wants to give me LOI on this piece designed just like this. I showed them also the R one fifteen plan and they're like, okay, we could see that. That's okay. But this is what is selling right now. This is what everybody wants is something attainable lots, something that's you can, they can afford to buy. And right next to the M and T zone is what is, in my opinion, is not a better place than to have that right here with twenty five hundred brand new jobs coming right next to it.
Questions?
Uh, I'll give you a comment. Let me see that. So I think I told you this, Pat, when we met personally, the only reason that I would consider R three here, and I reemphasize the word consider it, that's not, it's a long ways from approving, just so it's on the record, is because of the M T zone. I'm on record with the, your chairs of the West Weaver. I want to see R three, and I've discouraged R three in other parts, kind of offlane, 12th Street. So I want to see the main corridor of 12th Street, nine hundred south, being that corridor for anything above R one fifteen right now. We should, we should build that corridor first and then move out from there. Okay, that's my, I'm just giving you my personal opinion where I'm at. If this, if this was not empty, and I'd say you're too far west, whether this road goes in or not, which I don't, my friends down in UDOT legislature think that they want to move it farther west than this. So I think they have a little more sayings than anybody else. So I'm not, I'm not taking this with any indications that that happened.
Sure.
In fact, if anything, it's going to be probably a half a mile to a mile west of here if and when it happens. And that, again, when I say if, that's probably ten, fifteen, twenty years out. So because you, you know, what they're talking about begin with would be to run to to nine hundred south and then not run anything past nine hundred south for probably thirty years, right? So so my question is then you don't have, what's your access to sixty seven? How do you get people out on sixty, sixty one? Is that going to be a new road though?
There's a dirt road here. This is all along 12th Street right here.
So you're going to dump everybody out on 12th Street?
Yes.
Okay. Will this road be improved with
with Black Pine?
With Black Pine, you know, Rick?
I believe they're proposing that, but I'm not sure if it's a full width.
Okay, well, so I'd want to see access. I want to, you know, see some type, some type of connectivity.
Okay, well, so I'd want to see access. I want to, you know, see some type, some type of connectivity through to 5900. I don't think all that traffic, you know, we're just in the process of, well, this, this section has been upgraded, but we're done a complete 12th, 12th Street over the next 12 months. So I'd want to see access to 5900 and probably want to see this connection be made here too. Is this your property here?
No, I'm in the process of negotiating with the owners right now.
Yeah, this needs to be tied together. So that's my comments, Matt and Chair.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of comments as well. I don't remember if it was a work session or it was in my office when we talked about the 12th Street overlay. Has that gone with the planning commission, that conversation?
The 12th Street overlay?
An overlay of higher density along 12th Street, kind of following that corridor because everybody in the room knows how I feel about the general plan and, and what people should be able to expect. Do I think that that makes sense to go along the corner corridor? Absolutely. It makes total sense to bring that density along that corridor. But if it's not depicted in the general plan, it's a really hard pill for me to swallow. Because even if it makes sense, it's not what the property owners and, and the community are expecting. So I would love for that conversation to happen at planning commission. An overlay, that's the one road that we know is existing, this one. I find it hard to time building density around that because we just don't know. But if you want to build density around a quarter that we know already exists, then I'm willing to entertain that. And then Commissioner Ford talked about anything above R115. I'm, I'm, I'm on the same page. It's going to make sense in different places, but with the unknowns of the north, of the north-south corridor. I just, I, it makes sense to neighbor this, but we don't know when that's going to exist. I just want to see it on a map. I guess that's the bottom line. I want to see that overlay.
Well, we've had, we've had those discussions with a couple of your planning commission members, if not more than one, is that do we want to revisit it and then designate, are we better off to go in and designate some R3 spots? Or, you know, an overlay works, but look back, okay, this is where our R3 is right now with the general plan. As you can see, it's kind of up for grabs. I can see some benefit to that. We've had that discussion.
We have.
I guess I would like the opinion of the planning commission, if that makes more sense. So, and, and I agree with Commissioner Bollos. I think that the general plan is great, but in the sense it's too thin. It doesn't give enough definition to where you're, for a property owner. And if we went in and said, okay, here's an overlay that would be considered for an R3, or here, here's an R3 zone, that's where it should go. I'm probably more comfortable with that.
And, and I see that, the, the generality of it is okay with me. But when we start getting down and developing those, those parcels and those areas, then I think we need to become more specific. And maybe that's why I'd like to have the conversation about an overlay. Because now we're looking at, okay, now we have this MT zone and we have the corridor that's being improved. And I think it's going to be completed. Just as the pieces start to fall into place, then we get more specific about it. But I just think it needs to be adopted as, as an amendment. I don't know, planning commissioners, I would really value your input.
I think there needs to be another way out of that part of the county.
Another way out here.
Another way out of there. I think there needs to be, to be another bridge in place over the river before we start putting a lot of density out here. Now, I'm not against the density. I'm not against the overlay, nothing like that. But I do think we're starting to get squeezed a little bit having one main corridor. And thank goodness, it's the size of facility it's going to be when we're done, that it is. Because I think we're really getting to a point of no return on having that on a dead end road. I mean, that road goes to Little Mountain. And, and, and so I think it's, it's time to start considering the other side of the tracks, the other side of 12th Street and having another corridor going east-west out of that area. Uh, great. If, if this ties in with the state's plans, or even if it's further west, that doesn't really matter. As long as there's another way to get back across the tracks and back across the river going east. That's a concern that I have.
Well, we're going to see that in the next two weeks of how big of an impact the, the, where we don't have a lot of the crossings on that river is going to make in that part of the county, when UDOT shuts 4,700 down to redo that bridge. I mean, that's a several month closure and your main north-south corridor out in that area, there's not an easy detour. You've either got to clear down to 5,900 or up to 27 and all the way around. And it's going to cause a lot of headache out there. And, and as it grows, you know, that's, that's where those things come in key. And, you know, when Pat brought this to us as the finding commission last week, and I really wanted to come and visit with you guys because, you know, as I look at this and, and I look at that general plan, and I really respect your comments of, you know, what's going on in the following with what's in that general plan. A lot of work went into that. You know, there was a lot of community input. And, you know, Pat brought up the 12th Street overlay. And as I look at that, I go back to what Director Grover said, you know, it's, in my opinion, it might be ahead of its time. You look at the 12th Street corridor on our east end, and there's a lot of that. Because that's, you know, a lot of time that's where that girl's going to come. And as the business and everything comes out west, there'll come a time when that needs to, I guess, be relooked at, I feel. But I think for the time being, you know, based on the input from the community and everything we got, this is what the community wanted. And as I look at an R3 designation out there and I get, you know, Black Pine might come. You know, I think today's decision is going to weigh a lot on what happens with Black Pine and, and how that decision goes today. But I look at just across the track and I look at all of the R3, the mixed use residential, the mixed use commercial vehicle oriented, I mean, the hubs there on the general plan and it shows it the way it is today. To say to, to start expanding that over, you know, on the other side of, of the, of the tracks and both the highway, I just, I think we're well ahead of the time than what's going to be there. And I agree with the comments. I brought up the same thing with, with the future corridor coming through there. UDOT doesn't know what they're doing in that area yet. And, and it's going to be a while for that decision's made to, to know that direction. So to start building off of that as a, you know, as a hub, I just, it's not the time. You know, and, and that's kind of how the development goes. I mean, right now, you know, based on the community input and everything going on, R3 is what the plan shows. I think R3 is what it needs to be out there if you want to develop, if you want to hold on to it. You know, things might change in the future. But if you want to go today, I think we need to fix that plan.
I appreciate that.
So I have a question. You say when it's coming, then that's when it should happen. But right now it's not the time because the community said it wasn't the time. When stuff comes is when someone's willing to pay to put all the infrastructure in, someone's willing to put it in. Because I know what sells and what will sell. That is actually my job. So right now is the time. If I'm willing to invest millions of dollars, then that is saying it is the time to do it, in my opinion.
Build it across where it's, where the general plan called for it. If the area, if it's time for the area, I mean, there's plenty of
This is the M and T zone. This is right where it should be.
But you've got R3 sitting right there along the tracks on the other side. I mean, if it's the time, then there's areas out there. We're not saying there's not areas out there that you could build this type of development. But based on, you know, the process we went through, I, I feel just like Commissioner Bull said, I'm going to stick to that map.
Well, if the M and T zone hadn't been approved, I wouldn't be even asking for this to be R3. And the M and T zone was approved after the master plan was approved.
Um, if I can make a comment.
Yeah.
Because I hate to agree with Pat, but I'm, I really wish we could stick hard and fast to our general plan. But we're dealing with several property owners, so many, and I mean, it's a double edged sword. We want to make sure the property owners have a good heads up of what's happening and what they can do with their land. But then we also have the opportunities that rise that are based on what land is available. So I, I see that the general plan has to be flexible in that sense so that we can take opportunities as they arise and not squash them based on certain property owners that may not make land available. So I, I think it's a compromise. I think everyone has that in their opinions where, you know, the general plan is general. But yeah, where we have this M and T zone that wasn't part of our original thought, but an opportunity came and we changed the general plan for it. I, I just think we have to be really balancing these, these ideas out because we can't control every element of land use.
Can I clarify one thing? The M and T zone went in with the original general plan, right? And we only changed a little portion of Hancock's ground and brought it in.
We changed the M and T zone at the last part of the general plan.
But when it was adopted, it was in the plan.
When it was adopted, there was a portion of it. And then we've expanded and built upon that as it's went.
It was under a different title. The title wasn't M and T.
It was, it was that Office Tech or whatever, for any brown basically.
But we had different information that helped us adopt, change that general plan. And we're going to continually have different information and different opportunities. And so there, I just feel there has to be a certain flexibility based on that and somehow balance the property owners' expectations with it. I, I, so I guess I have no answers, but I do have some flexibility to what Pat's suggesting.
And I'd like to build on what Commissioner said. Further west, we're talking about a port today. There may not be a port, but that's our M area. Sooner or later, there will be something down there. And to me, it only makes sense to be able to, in the future, have smaller lots there. Because we want people to live close to where they work, cuts down the car travel, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that I'm, I, I don't know whether I want to agree with Pat or not. But the thing of it is, is that area out there needs infrastructure put in. And if this brings infrastructure with it, maybe we ought to think about that. Because in my mind, I've been trying to roll around the idea between economic development and residential zoning. Because to me, in the future, they almost maybe need to go hand in hand because of the type of homes that port people won't make as much money as manufacturing people. So they got to live somewhere. And I think it's important that we need to have infrastructure out there. That's my two.
I don't disagree with that. And, and, and we have more, we may have more information today than we did when the general plan map was adopted. That's why I think we need to go back and say, do we need, do we need a, an overlay? Do we need to expand? For me, it's just all about the public perception of you used our input at, at this date and now you're going to change it because you think it's better. And I just need the public to be involved in that whole process of the change. You're not able to understand what I'm saying.
No, I, I agree.
Because otherwise, the perception is that you gave us this general plan and well, now you got a, a better offer. Well, if it's a better offer, let's explain that to the public why it is and why it makes sense to make a change and let's make the change. So the expectation is still there. We can still go look at this map and we can see it's changed. But now we know what, what the potential is.
The one good thing about this area is the public is very, I, I mean, this is one area when we have a hearing, the public comes out. We get a lot of comments when things go on in this area. So, I mean, and that's, yeah, if we want to run it through the process, the people are going to come and speak. And I have a feeling I know what's going to be said at it. But, you know, just based on the other meetings we've had with this group from the public, they come out with pitchforks and fire on sticks and
But it's an opportunity for the planning commission and then the commissioners to explain the whole thought process about why we argue and then we feel like it should change. At this point, they're not sitting in on these conversations. They're just looking at the map going, you know, follow the map.
That's true. Well, and I can say this, and I'm going to agree with Pat on a couple of things, that development takes place when people willing to put their money out. Then it's, this should be driven by the private sector, not by government. And obviously you have to listen to members of the public, but still, it's your guys' decision and ours to make the best decisions for the future. I can tell you this. Uh, five minutes ago, there's a hearing that started in the Capitol. I'll be going down to, I'll be in the next hour uh, about the inland port. I'm assuming that the inland port will be approved by the inland port authority. I'm talking about the West Weaver inland port here in about two hours. If that happens, which I, in the same 90% chance that does happen today, that changes the whole scenario, basically from 93 up to 59 maybe farther. And it's going to take, uh, again, and I, I agree with Wayne. It's going to be a, a demographic out there that's probably not going to be making 30 buck an hour job. They're going to be 20, 25 bucks, but they're going to need attainable housing. And the close, and again, the idea is let's keep, let's keep as many people off our roads as we can. That's the reason inland ports is going to probably succeed is because we want people out of Y15, not driving into Davison, Salt Lake County. We want them here in Weber County working. That's the whole point. So I think we have, so it's going to change because of the inland port. Again, this is not going to happen overnight, just like this road. But I think we have to change our mindset that development industry is going to go to that west side sooner or later. So we better start putting in our minds, we better have housing for that segment of our workforce that we want to have in Weber County, want them to stay here. So I would just keep that in mind. I think the public understands that when they say, you know, uh, we don't want that developed, but I'd certainly like a place for my grandkids and kids to go to work. They don't have to drive 50 miles each way to Salt Lake and spend their money on gas and fuel and along the way. So that whole vision that we've had for West Weaver will change over the next number of years. Now, if it gets voted down, it's, you know, I think it's still a matter of time before that happens. So I think you just have to keep that in mind.
Any other comments from the planning commission?
I, I agree. I really appreciate everybody's comments. I, I like that our main focus is what our community wants and what's best for them. We are all here for them, right? We, we may be volunteers, but it's not about my opinion or anybody else's. It's what our community needs. And I, I truly believe that's what Pat's trying to present too, something. And I think when he presents these to us, he is talking about what's best for the community. I, I think it is the right process as far as him bringing it to us so that we can talk and have a discussion, talk about these overlays, because I wasn't even aware of the, I mean, it's been vocalized a little bit, but I, I wasn't fully aware of it until this meeting. So I appreciate that. I think that letting the community see that this is maybe a change that we need to have and help them prepare, like I've had to be prepared for the future and have that vision different. I like the general plan being fluid to a certain extent, but I also like that you stick to it and say, okay, let's talk about it before we just willy-nilly approve things. I think that what I keep hearing, and my biggest concern is what Commissioner Fabelo said, was, was the infrastructure. I'm really concerned, and that's the main thing that all the public come, when that's their first thing they say when we talk about any development out there, even Black Pine, all that is what it's going to be to 12th Street. Because it is already hard, it's already a small road. That's, that's my main concern. So not against it. I, I agree, we, we're going to need this in the future at some point. I just am not sure if it's the right time right now. And just because of the infrastructure simply. It's going to change the dynamic of it, but our whole Western Weaver County, the dynamic is changing and change is good to a certain extent. So.
Anything else? Anything from staff?
No, I think the schedule's good direction. That's what we were looking for on this, because obviously the general plan shows one thing and, you know, timing, you know, is this the right time? And I think Pat's kind of getting a feel of where you're at on this and just give you enough direction.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
We missed the other guy.
We're at, oh, no. I thought you were going to talk to you about some news, but apparently we're at. We, we had a good discussion. We looked up and they gave us some
Pat, Chairman, I'd like you to go into closed session. Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to have a roll call for that?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Never thought so either, but.
As long as. Some, some do it, but I don't think it requires.
We're now in a closed.
Okay, we're ahead, but I will entertain a motion to leave the closed session.
I tell move to adjourn the closed session, move back into our public meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just for information, that was a closed session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. We are not quite to item five yet, so I would entertain a motion to saunter.
I would move to saunter.
Second?
To 145, all over.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know some started three times last week. All right, we're back. In our 145 agenda item and discussion regarding employee compensation study, we have Scott Park, Emily Wild, and Sean Wilkinson.
Do you want me to start?
Scott, your first one.
Okay. Okay. So we put out RFP for the salary survey. And we got two responses back, so we kind of wanted to talk about the responses. A little bit and the cost because they came in. You know, we had two, we had one for just our sworn officers and then one for countywide. And just kind of talk about that with you, so. Essentially, what we're looking at for just sworn officers and both are kind of similar in cost wise. Is around fifty thousand for sworn officers. If we were to do countywide, it basically doubles the cost to do a compensation study, so. That's kind of the the cost of it, I mean, there are there are other. Benefits they do. To help with that, they look at job description review, they look at internal equity, they look at market analysis, they do a really good. Market comparison, looking at our wages and kind of where we fall within our wages. And this is kind of both of them, so whichever one we choose. They do give like implementation scenarios, so how do we implement it? You know, how do we? Kind of like financial impact and analysis of, you know, what what's going to be in the financial impact to implement the changes that they recommend. So, you know, it's a full suite of of services that are included in that cost. So. You want to add anything, Scott?
The question is, so we didn't appropriate a budget for this to begin with, we just went out to go do to see, see what it would cost. For just the sworn officers and then for everybody, it's interesting to me that. Looking at five positions. Cost me fifty thousand dollars and looking at a hundred and ninety positions. Only costs me fifty thousand dollars more, I don't know why those.
That's that's seem a little strange to me.
We looked at the cost and there's a lot of, there's like, basically, if you want us to turn on the project and get all these people and just resources, there's a cost to that, and then. There's an additional cost for each additional position that we're looking at, but. Really, the time and effort energy to get the people together to draw the research is what's is the cost. The question you guys commissioners is what do we want to do, so if we decide we want to do the whole counting. We'll pick a different evaluation team that's broader than just the sheriff's office, we'll get a couple of different people from different departments, maybe culture parks and rec. Perhaps operations to help. Sit on this evaluation committee, pick the right vendor and shepherd it all the way through. If we're just going to do the sheriff's office, obviously, we wouldn't include all the other departments, we would just. Pick people from the sheriff's office, HR and payroll to push it through. Question is, is do we, so really, the question is, you know, and do we want the answer? I kind of think we do want the answer because I'd like to know where we really are. And I'd like to know where we really are compensation countywide. So I mean, if it were up to me and we had unlimited amounts of money, which we don't. We, I would say, let's figure it out for the whole county. And figure out a roadmap of where we need to be and then how we're going to get there, I don't think this is something we can do. Depending on the results in one year, you know, quick, quick adjustment, but if we could say, you know what, you need to switch your. Benefit to cash ratio and make it more like this. We can start working on that over time, so I would like to know kind of where we're at on everything. Because if we do it for just the sheriff's office. It may help us a little bit with the county, but we're going to come back and ask the same questions for everybody else a little bit later. So, in my opinion. Well, I don't know why it's not so much more expensive, I mean, it doubles the cost, but we get a whole bunch more out of them. I'd say if we're going to do it, let's do the whole thing. Hundred thousand dollars. Do the whole compensation study for everybody in the county and then let's just kind of see where we're at. And in this budget cycle, then we can start to make. Decisions as to how we want to get or where we want to be. And then how we're going to get there, and it may be that we have to transition over. Five years or something like that, but. But really, at this point, commissioner, since we haven't appropriated a budget, we told you we'd come back once we got the bids. And let you guys decide whether we want to do countywide or just the sheriff's office.
Or at all.
Or at all, yeah.
Do we need to do it? Or? I guess, do we expect to get something out of it that's going to be beneficial?
So.
Do you want to answer that?
I'll, so from my perspective.
Yeah.
From my perspective, I think the sworn officers, public safety, we need to do something. Just because of their turnover rates. Because there that is changing so quickly as far as wages go. In that area. I think something. Needs to be done in that area. So.
And I don't think that we can do it internally because I don't think that our results will be, it doesn't matter what we conclude. They'll be very skeptical of them, I think we need to get an outside person to look at this.
I agree with that.
That's true. Well, I guess beneficial would be. Are we going to have received some deliverables? That say, you're doing this right, you're doing this wrong, here's where we need to, so. We have some metrics to go on other than. You know, I mean, we've seen salary surveys before, they didn't say, look, Davis County is here, you're here. Thanks, you know, here's what Salt Lake gives. That's, we we already know what that is.
Right.
So. To me, to spend a hundred thousand for that information is not worthwhile.
That's where I think, looking at. These guys, both of these, after reviewing their RFP, kind of go above and beyond just giving us. Data, right, they're actually helping us analyze their how, they're coming up with different strategies that we can. Put together. And then implementation plans, you know, they look at things like. FSLA status on all of our positions. They look at compression issues that could potentially be. Current or in the future and and help. As part of the plan, come up with. You know, strategies to help prevent that from happening.
Okay.
So. I I believe it's more than just looking at market rates.
Okay. And have you talked to anybody that they've done a study for?
We have not yet, so they gave us. Some. Different counties and references, but that is part of actually going through the evaluation determining which. Vendor we are going to use. We will actually call references. In determining who we want to go with, so. But we have not done it at this point, at this point, we're just determining should we even do it or not.
Well, I think, I definitely think we should go countywide, especially, like you said, Scott. The incremental. Value of what you're getting. Just makes that worth it. It's a lot more than I thought it would be.
I was hoping we'd get away about sixty thousand for the whole county and this a hundred thousand, so we're. Not quite double. But that was based off of what Davis County paid a few years ago, so I was like, okay, maybe a little bit more, not a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, I think we're going to do it, I agree with Commissioner Bowles.
Honestly, I think we should do it.
Yeah. I, so, but are you talking about doing it for next budget, putting it in next year's budget or this year?
So.
We don't have this year's budget.
Well, so we have money we could pull out of the contingency fund for this, if you want to do and get them started on it now, it's going to take them several months.
Right.
In fact, I don't know that they would be back with their results before. Our budget cycle for the 2025 budget. We could work on them if that's desired to make sure that they get us, you know, information before, you know, November. But they have several monthly time.
Yeah, I mean, both both of them kind of have. Timeline and, I mean, it's going to take. You know. Four to six months.
Yeah.
Just to, just to get things.
I would think.
Put together, so we, and we haven't even done a. You know, decided which company, so it's probably not going to be ready for. You know, increases or whatever we want to do. For next year.